Okay, Mr. Christiane, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Hedley.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy.
Here.
Mrs. Janicek.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Scouso.
Here.
Mrs. Turner. Mr. Mojek.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Again, I apologize to everybody for our little delay here, but we had an executive session earlier here tonight that ran a little bit over and we discussed some legal matters and that were brought to the, for the board's attention. At this time, approval of the minutes. If everyone's had a chance to take a look at them, I have a first and second.
Second.
It was approved by Mr. Christensen, second by Mrs. Hedley. Mr. Christianeary?
Voting is open. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Adopt the business items.
I move to adopt the agenda for business items.
Items. First, all right, Mr. Christensen first, second by Mrs. Hoppy. Mr. Christianeary?
Voting is open.
Nah. Yeah, you can't. Not tonight. I'm on top of this here.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. Caleb Bush, student government report for this month, please.
Hello. SGA is starting to focus on our fall and Halloween projects. We have an exciting Spear Week full of fun activities such as handing out candy on the morning of Halloween, student-staff costume contest, and door decorating. Along with Halloween festivities, our committees are also beginning to think of ideas for future plans and preparation for upcoming holidays.
Thank you, sir. At this time, anybody from PTO, PTA? No more? All right. Larry, you got anything?
No. Do you want me to read it?
Is it there?
It's there.
All right, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. Okay, for the PTO, PTA report, first, we will start with IMS. IMS is holding their, uh, let's see, IMS PTO will hold lunch period Halloween celebrations for their students October 31st. November 22nd, IMS Craft Fair Committee has sold out tables for the fair and has a waitlist in place. They are working on advertising and other finishing touches for the fair. And then there is also Black Friday gift card raffle tickets that are still available till November 14th.
She's in the waiting room.
Oh, all right. I'll finish IMS. And then the PTO will host a book fair November 10th through the 14th. Take it away.
All right, let's see who you're coming on.
Hey, good evening. This is Anne Marie Christian. I'm with William Penn PTO. I picked up with NAMs.
Thank you.
Student at NAMs had their first school store recently and had fun shopping. Uh, the Mrs. Fields fundraiser recently wrapped up and is going to be delivered soon, and they're getting ready for their Halloween bingo taking place on October 23rd for families and students to attend. At Franklin, the PTO-funded school shirts, those arrived and were distributed the first week of October. Students and staff have already begun to wear them, including the second grade field trip to the zoo. Simmons Farm hayride was a success and enjoyed by all, and the annual Book-It program kicked off last month and has been enjoyed by both students and teachers. Last week was their fall book fair. Trunk or Treat is coming up on October 23rd. They have a pumpkin patch drop-off on October 23rd, and voting's going to take place between October 26th and 31st. They're ready for their Halloween parties and the parade on the 31st, and they've got fundraisers as far as Sarah's candies and Mrs. Fields, and they're doing a Pie Place fundraiser for Thanksgiving delivery. They're currently planning for Cookies with Santa on December 5th and the Santa's Secret Shop the second week of December. Their next meeting is November 18th at 6:00 PM. At Lincoln, their events have been off to a great start. Since the last meeting, they held their fall book fair and fall festival. Both events were so much fun for the children. Next, they're gearing up for the classroom Halloween parties and the parade at the end of the month. Moriah Elementary hosted a wonderful all-school assembly from the Cayman Science Center that showed students how technology and collaboration come together to further space exploration. The Fall Scholastic Book Fair visits this week, allowing students to shop for books and items during library, and their field trips are already beginning with their second graders heading to the zoo soon. At Penn, we also hosted the Cayman Science Center for the Space Exploration Assembly. Students and staff also received T-shirts from the PTO, and we've been busy with our Cookie Dough fundraiser and most Spirit Night fundraiser. We held our book fair last week and are hosting the Fall Festival on October 23rd. We're closing out the month with the 4th grade hayride at Simmons Farm and the Halloween parade and parties on the 31st. Washington held its Fall Festival on October 15th. They have a few fundraisers going on, such as Sarah's and Stepabag, and they're currently getting ready to start planning for their Cookies with Santa event, and the 4th grade class is going to have an amazing bonfire event at Simmons Farm this month. Lastly, the Bethel Park Elementary School PTO had their first meeting of this year, and they were present at the Open Houses and Community Day. They're excited to continue planning next year's events, and ask everyone to please consider joining at their next meeting, which is Tuesday, December 9th, at 6:30 PM in the NAMs cafeteria. That's it from the PTOs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Christian. I appreciate you jumping in and saving the day for Mrs. Hattie Lake. We've got more work for her coming. Uh, committee reports.
Have a good night.
I'm sorry, solicitor report. I'm sorry, I am not.
I gotta kick you under the table tonight.
Yeah.
I do not have a report this evening. I presented information that was executive content. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports. Mrs. Hoppy.
Yes, I have a Steel Center buzz. Skills USA students are prepping for their Fall Leadership Conference on October 29th through 31st. The Steel Center Open House is scheduled for Monday, November 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the renovation update is the main office was operational on the first day of school, and new office furniture was installed shortly thereafter. Collision Repair has moved back into their finished program area, and welding is in the process of being moved back into its permanent space. Culinary and baking are wrapping up, and the electricians have set the new generator at the powerhouse. Construction in the Veterinary Assistant Program area is set to begin later this month. There's lots going on at Steel Center. I could be here all night talking about it, so I'll just stop right there.
You sure? One more line? Well, thank you. Open House was November?
November 3rd.
So if any of us wanted to, we'd let you know, or we can walk through. Thank you. Anybody else for committee reports? Mrs. Janicek?
Yes, I have a report, but before, Mrs. Hoppy, what date was the Open House? I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, Mrs. Janicek. The Open House is November 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Okay.
That's a Monday.
Thank you. Yes, I do have, my apologies, my camera is not working. It is upside down, which would be more distracting than not being able to see me, I'm afraid. I do have a report for you from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association Conference. That is where I am right now. I went as our delegate to the conference and the voting assembly. There were fabulous, really inspiring sessions at the conference. It was really the best of, the best of the conferences I've been to. There was a lot of information about, from districts that have implemented really successful mental health programs for students. Riverside had a really great program. One of the quotes they had at the end of their presentation was, "We would have funded this program," speaking of when their grant expired. They had grant funding to run a program in their schools. He said, "We would have funded this program versus replacing a teacher at the end of the grant cycle. It was that impactful." And he talked about training all of the staff, including the coaching staff, the athletic department, really anyone who was working in our schools and with our students in any capacity on mental health first aid, and at recognizing signs that students needed more help, and teaching them how to connect with the counseling staff available. So there were several presentations in that vein. There was also some really great programming about the brain-based neuroscience of learning, which really has been known since the 90s, but isn't necessarily widely taught and shared, about how our brains and the different regions of our brains operate when learning, and what's most impactful to create new neural pathways, which signify learning especially for children. Things like engagement, body movement, choice, getting constructive feedback that's specific to that student, being able to collaborate, and largely feeling safe, a sense of safety, psychological safety in the environment. Yes, also physical safety, for sure, but educational safety, that it is okay to take a risk. It is okay to fail, that you won't be shamed for that, that it's part of learning, and to feel that the adults around you are taking care of you as a student and a learner. Really good information about that, and several great presentations about board service and about establishing norms, operating norms for a board, and having boards working together to think about and talk about and really own the core values of the board, and intertwining that with the values and mission and vision of the district. Just a lot of really, really good information that I'm happy to bring back and talk with you all about in depth. One other quote that stuck out at me from a session was the one-to-one initiatives, which when we talk about that, we're talking about a device, right? Like, one student gets one device, a Chromebook. And they shared that in their district, they changed it to One To World, because it wasn't just about a way to do homework and take tests. The device was a way to connect students to what is outside their community, to connect them to other parts of the state, other parts of the country, other parts of the world that they could not go to without the device. That brings them to those places to experience entirely different things and learn about other ways of being and learning and existing as societies. And I thought that was really inspiring. The delegate assembly met this afternoon, and there were not any substantial changes to the 2026 legislative platform. They cleaned up a bunch of items and switched a word here and there, and that was pretty much the extent of that. Nothing major is changing. We did have a session that was canceled today. It was supposed to be the federal programs that are available to apply for funding to assist students in school with mental health concerns, and it was canceled due to the government shutdown. So they switched in another program. And that is my short report from the annual conference, and thank you for sending me as your delegate.
Thank you, Mrs. Janicek. Nobody else at this time? All right, superintendent's report. Dr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Mojek. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with strategic plan update. Last month, I shared a printed copy of our balanced scorecard with the progress over the four years of its existence and highlighted where we would be focusing our efforts for this fifth year and its final year of existence. Tonight, I want to start the board thinking about the next strategic plan. So at your tables tonight is a copy of a timeline, a proposal for the development of the next plan, and right inside the, inside cover there is a proposed milestones of events. It does, like our last plan, include a different stakeholder input and involvement in its development. But it also starts to narrow the focus from where we were five years ago. We had six different buckets of, of ideas and goals that we were attempting to accomplish over the life of those five-year plans, but we're also a very different place than we were five years ago when its plan was being developed. Financially, in a different place, programmatically, a lot has happened systematically. All sorts of, of aspects of this district have evolved, not just from the plan, but from the five years of work that we have done. So it's my opinion or recommendation that that the plan sort of narrows the focus now on where we should be in the future, five or four or five years from today. And it focuses on three particular areas. The first is, and these are described in more detail in this proposed handout for you. The first focus point or bucket would be regarding the portrait of a graduate. There is considerable amounts of information and research that talk about the value of soft skills, as they're called, euphemistically, I guess, that you infuse into your students' experience, the academic experience, to help them build things like communication skills, self-awareness, collaboration skills, problem-solving skills, and really focus on them or isolate them as, as necessary for not just mastery of a course curriculum, but mastery of life's curriculum and the challenges they'd face in a workplace, in the university placement, or in the military, for instance. I would like our, our district to contribute in the development of what the profile of our graduates should look like. What are those skills that we want them to encounter and master over their 12 years or 13 years of time with us? The second bucket I'm recommending we look at is continuing the work that has begun on personalizing a student's educational journey. And you can look at this from the offerings that we have available to the, the levels, academic levels, the rigor, the choices. It provides also direction to our teachers and through professional development on how to reconnect with different learners that are in front of them in the classroom. So this is sort of a philosophical approach, and as a strategic plan, we can identify how we want those skills, those philosophies, to be infused into our program of study. And the last, third bucket, the third focal point I'm recommending that we look at is our special education services, what I'm calling a, you know, a real intense analysis and development of our programming, to be sure we have everything and anything we, we need and want to have to offer our students, and that the students who take advantage of our special education programming are getting the best possible experience. So those were, that would be my perception of the vision where we want to be in five years is having spent quality time as a district, thinking about the outcomes of our students, both through their profile and soft skills, through their personalized journey, through our curriculum, and through our student support services in special education. But this development, this plan also gives opportunity for more consideration on other areas that need to be attended to as well. I'm presenting it tonight as, as a document for the board to review independently, and then we'll come back next month and talk about how you want to proceed from here on the development of our successor plan to the current strategic plan.
Can I make one comment on the portrait of a graduate? So that's interesting. You talked about the skills of communication and things like that. Really important. I think we don't do a good job of that today. We have a lot, a lot of areas where we can improve, just in, you know, verbal, written communication, you know, basic business skills and things like that. One thing that we're seeing a lot in, in the company I work, that was a technology company, software company, is we're starting to relax college education requirements. And it's, and our parent company now is based in the Bay Area. They, many of those companies have omitted college requirements for a long time. You know, if you, we can prepare people to be, to communicate well, to be smart, to, you know. They actually have a lot of opportunities, and so I think that maybe that kind of mindset can shape what we try to accomplish in that portrait of a graduate.
Yes. Yeah. I think I read recently that Algebra II is the requirement now for consideration in Google. Like, just get through Algebra II and we'll talk to you.
Right.
Which is a totally different.
Well, and so many jobs are becoming so specialized. You know, you don't need four years of this wide lens of education. You know, if you can walk into Google and they can say, "You're a smart guy or smart girl. We're going to train you to focus on this area." I mean, that's how the world works today.
Yeah. Well, yeah, so that, and I, what I'm, what I'm envisioning then is a really robust conversation and consideration of all of those qualities that we want to infuse through all of our coursework. So by the end of your journey, when you reach the graduation dais, we can say that this is the profile. This is what we can assure.
Right.
Our graduates have the skill in these areas that are, it's not curriculum, it's, it's the soft skills. It's life skills.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to turn now to Mr. Cromie for his October Five Big Things.
Hello, everyone.
Five creepy things, I guess, based on your font.
Yes, yes, yes. Please don't be alarmed. It's just a font. Today's, this is October's Five Big Things. Working? The Bethel Park girls tennis team recently played in its third straight Whipple Class 3A championship match at the Janet Swanson Tennis Center on the Washington and Jefferson campus. In a battle of previously undefeated teams, the Hawks finished second to Shady Side Academy. Bethel Park qualified for the PIAA Class 3A tournament, which began this afternoon. And I just got word that Bethel Park won that match, three to one, over Fairview. So they have advanced to the state semifinals, which will be contested Friday afternoon in Hershey. Bethel Park High School freshman Karina Call has been named a Steinway Young Artist for the third straight year. She recently performed Haydn and Chopin before the Pittsburgh Symphony at Heinz Hall. She also participates in the high school marching band, concert band, and treble choir, and serves as an accompanist for the strings program. It's a very prestigious honor. William Penn Elementary School 4th grader celebrated the completion of their CKLA Personal Narrative Unit with a pajama-themed Starstruck Writers Cafe. The students shared their true cozy stories in a cozy and softly lit classroom while classmates listened and applauded. With help from paraprofessional Mrs. Cindy Littenberger, they served hot chocolate cafe-style to mark their accomplishments as growing writers. Bethel Park School District in partnership with Spartan Pharmacy will host a community flu shot clinic on Tuesday, November 4th, from 11:00 AM until 7:00 PM, and the Physical Education Hub, Room P402 at the high school. The clinic is open to all community members ages five and older. Insurance is billed, and there is a $40 fee for those without coverage. No classes will be held that day, so there'll be plenty of parking available in the athletic wing. Again, P402 is the fourth floor. It's the main floor that you enter into the thing, so it's very convenient. Bethel Park High School celebrated the unforgettable 2025 homecoming filled with school spirit and community pride. Caroline Zelt and Ty Benlock were crowned homecoming princess and prince, respectively, while Joanna Little and Sean Rovers were named this year's queen and king. The evening featured a spirited parade, lively festivities, and brought students, families, and the community together to celebrate the Black Hawk spirit. And that concludes the Five Big Things.
Well done, Mr. Cromie. Better every month. Okay, now we'll, we'll turn to our Curriculum and Instruction Department with the Bright Spots, and which looks like it's coming from.
Secondary first.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for this month's secondary Bright Spots, which actually coincides very nicely with what Dr. Walsh just presented. We have had focus on curriculum data and statistics. I'm not working here now. There we go. Looking at six to 12, one more slide, Mr. Christianeary? Oh, I got it. We're going to start in Independence Middle School, went on what I'd like to just call a learning walk. So, so many times we focus on the education and the content of, you know, specific courses. Wanted to show some of the things that our students are starting to see as well-rounded students and that are displayed in the hallways. So what you're looking at here is a board. It's called Stories of Bravery on the side. It talks about different individuals they did research on, their accomplishments and, and other things they achieved to aspire to. On the right was drawing prompts that they did the elements of art and design and were studying different artistic and elements and experiences there, kind of broadening their horizon in education in those areas. Next slide, please. This one here was a bunch of different scientists, individuals with a mirror in the middle, and it showed all the different scientific fields that are available to students with different areas, concentrations of focus, starting part of their career exploration, so they can kind of see and envision themselves if they are interested in pursuing those fields. The picture on the right there, which is, you know, covering some of those walls, hopefully blue-side tape, is Stories of Civilization. While our students will study ancient civilizations, they study the grapes of that. It's geography, religion, achievements, politics, government, economics, and social structures. So in trying to incorporate and learn responsible use of AI, our students learned about ancient civilizations, then they started plugging those parameters in based on their own creations, and then they used AI based on the parameters they sent to create a story on the civilization with the parameters they set that they created on their own in that. And then they put those up for display out in the hallway. All right, Mr. Cromie. Yeah? Nope, yeah. Nothing yet. In this, we had students, they did, they were doing presentations, and they had these prompt boards to kind of reference their learning, talking about different prompts and things. Then they took questions from the students, again, trying to get that engagement. And then the one on the right, I really loved. This one I had to go into a classroom for as well. It was a growth mindset wall, and they, each student had a vision board, and I know it's really hard to see, but on that, they did some self-reflection in the beginning of the year in this specific classroom. And each thing, they wrote different goals. There was trees with branches with a display, and one was me, myself, and I, so things that they were focused on that year. Academic goals, health and well-being, try for change, try something new, saving money, family and friends. So again, starting to, we have samples of this, and this is where I think we are looking as a district to make sure that we are intentional with where these are planted throughout education and making sure our students have these opportunities in all of their classes throughout. One of our Unified Arts, we had a bridge-building display here. This was the 300 Club with the amount of pressure that could withstand, as well as our 7th grade. There were some music and arts displays there as well. Our artistic displays K to 12 are always phenomenal and always are, you know, showed in our steam fair at the end of the year in May with different things there. Next slide, please. In addition to the learning, LEAD is continuing to grow at IMS again. Last year, they had two LEAD days. This year, they plan on doing one a quarter, and they could possibly continue to grow. The buy-in in LEAD and the opportunity, the Learning and Richmond Activity Days that the high school has been doing, middle school's now back on with two years doing it. They did some stuff in the past with it, but again, the exploration and learning, when you look at the opportunities and trying different things, teacher volunteer, so different projects, crafts, creations. It's not just about what you're doing, it's how you're doing it, who you're doing it with, and creating bonds with the staff, friends, other classmates. Next slide. More pitchers, you know, playing Monopoly. I mean, there's things that we always say, "They should do this or try this." And so again, whatever students want to elect to sign up for, they have different opportunities and options. The way the middle school organized it, with all the teacher volunteers in areas that they were passionate in for students to go and explore was truly amazing, and it's picking up every time they do this. And again, excited to hear they're going to do four of these this year and maybe more in the future. LEAD continues at the high school. Mr. Cromie does a great job of putting this on the website and showing it. Our food service director, Brandon Agostinelli, is doing one session a month now as well, where he's teaching different kids how to prep and cook different foods in addition to our food classes. Next year, we, year, month, he said he's going to show kids how to make and cook pierogies. So that'll be their focus there. In addition to that, it's really been revived in the high school under our new administration. They've been sending out surveys to students, taking inquiries of what kind of sessions they want. Students are volunteering to lead sessions, in addition to our teachers that consistently volunteer monthly on this. Next slide, please. Just some more sessions, the art and making scar. Uh, just some more sessions, the art and making scars and uh, doing different uh, things in the art class of Mr. Walsh is always important. There's open art and thing, and what's really nice is sometimes our kids get academically bogged down uh, with their course of studies and having to maintain a certain level of course load. So this gives an opportunity, again, for you to try different things. They were doing uh, college application review and fast review in the top left. Got out for some ultimate frisbee sometimes with uh, labs, ensembles. Kids don't get to take as many physical education classes or try a tech ed class. I remember the very first lead session when we first started some years back, uh, we had all these AP kids in the woodshop making these toolboxes that they went back for two sessions and they said they never got to take a technology class because of their course load, and they were so grateful for that opportunity. So it is alive and well. It's thriving under the both administrations at Independence Middle School and Bethel Park High School. Next slide. And then just rounding it out, uh, Mr. Cromie mentioned this last month, but I wanted to give a shout out to the high school counseling department, uh, Mr. Bruce, Mrs. Michaels, Mrs. Smith, and Mr. Lorenzi. Uh, along with the other South Hill Consortium of Counselors, they put on, it it might be the fifth year in a row now. It was here for a while, but for five years in a row. Uh, Bethel Park High School is the uh, hub of the annual College and Career Fair, where they had this year 160-plus college, university, trade schools, and other military reps available for our students. They're able to meet face-to-face uh, with these reps, review their applications, discover programs, majors, scholarships, and different career paths during those times. Uh, during that, they can build valuable connections and they start planning for the future. So that was the flyer they used for this year, even though it rained and it was a very nasty weather night. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, lots of people showed up. So over 2,000 students, they tracked this through an app, which is truly amazing because the students can plan out their visits. It shows the amount of times with QR codes that they spend at tables and tracks that data. So with 2,000 students plus their families, we're upwards of, you know, 4,000 people in attendance for this night. Um, it goes in the main gym, the south gym, and the cafeteria. The layout has gotten better, uh, with our vendors and our maintenance crew setting up tables that have afforded them to take on more uh, tables and vendors each year. Next slide, please. Which is great because the money they make from this is, there's no profit from this in the counselors group. So the money they raise helps put on this event, pays for it. Uh, and this year, with some of the extra funds, they're starting an annual scholarship. So there's eight schools, community schools that participate with this. Each school, based on a kid, a student that attended and submits something based on that app and they collect the data, is eligible. One per school, $500 scholarship for any student that attended that evening and did it. Parents, teachers, counselors, and the next slide will be a video where you can just see a little pan of the gym. But again, uh, i- it's truly phenomenal. They've really got it down to a science in the planning. And again, despite all the uh, weather, uh, implement weather, i- it was another success. So thank you to our counselors, our administration, our staff, um, our maintenance custodial crew, and everyone that had a hand on it. It's a tremendous undertaking, and having it here only solidifies our students' opportunities where if it traveled or went elsewhere, our students might not be as inclined to attend. So it really is a tremendous opportunity where many Bethel Park students and families take advantage of that opportunity every year. And then there is another one at Peters Township that is exclusively to the trades, that we also advertise and encourage students to check in addition to the ones in the vendors that are here uh, with post-secondary education. So that's our secondary updates. Over to Mrs. Figlioli.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks, Anthony. Um, very excited. A lot of work goes on behind the scenes in preparation for the elementary school. And over the past year, we've been working with um, an organization called K-12 to help us begin to select the furniture for the elementary school. So about a month ago, that furniture arrived, um, samples of student desks, teachers' desks, some storage units. And we were able to start looking at the furniture and actually seeing it in real time and allowing the students to see it as well. Um, so the day that it was assembled, the students, we were at Neil Armstrong where it's being held right now, and we could not keep the students from the furniture. Um, so they came in, they, we told them, go ahead, you try it all out, let us know what you like, what you don't like. Um, what was funny was the thing they liked the most was sitting at the teacher's desk. Um, a lot of great impressions of our teachers coming from the students. Um, but they were really honest about what they liked and what they didn't like. So it was really helpful from that particular grade level of fifth grade to hear the students' feedback on that. We wanted to have an opportunity for all of the teachers in all of the elementary schools to be able to see the furniture in person. Um, so we held two open houses. One was last Tuesday from 3:30 to 5:00. We held another one this evening from 3:30 to 5:00. And we welcomed the teachers to come in and explore the furniture. Um, one more, Anthony. Um, so what we had on display for them were all of the different variations of student desks, um, that we've been considering. There are thousands of types of different student desks. Um, and I, and even in the conversations with teachers, they were asking, well, could we see something like this? Could we see something like this? Um, if you look in the middle, we had a group of teachers today that brought the contents of a student's desk. And we could not have been more grateful because we were able to see, will it fit in a non-traditional desk that doesn't have the lid that lifts? And happy to report that it does fit in the plastic bin that we were concerned about. Um, so the teachers have been really, really helpful about helping us anticipate issues that may come up within furnishing a classroom, classroom storage, storing of student materials, storage of teacher materials. So there was a lot of great feedback from the teachers that visited to tell us what they thought, um, what they liked, what they didn't like. We were also able to provide them with some of the things that we've been working on with K-12. We meet with them virtually. Uh, we go into the building virtually and are able to look at the furniture in the spaces. Before we purchase anything, we will be able to see it in that space, in the dimensions, to know that it is going to fit and meet our needs. Um, I think it's often overlooked how important learning spaces are to learning, not just the setup of the space, but also the furniture. Can tell students very much about what type of learning you can expect in a space. Oh, there's more, I'm sorry. Uh, there's actually one more after this. Um, so next steps. We're getting very, very close to getting a, our final purchase order together for the elementary school. That should be happening within the next two months. So we have now started meeting twice a week with K-12 to work through every bill, every classroom and room, office, space in the school. Um, we're also going to ask the staff to participate in a survey. Of course, not everyone was able to attend the open house. It was after school. So we will have a survey that goes out that asks their preferences on the different attributes of furniture, whether it's if something is mobile, what the storage is like, is there a modesty panel in front of the desk? There are lots of intricate things that teachers want to ensure are in place in the furniture. Um, a part of that survey is also going to be used for us to kind of get a baseline of where our teachers are with offering students opportunities for movement within the school day, offering opportunities for collaboration, for student choice in the learning environment configurations, also in the learning activities. So this will give us a really great data point that when we look at it again next year, at the end of a year in the school, to see how we've grown um, and how our, our, our data has shown that the learning environment has impacted the quality of learning and the type of learning. Um, and something that we're really excited about, last slide, uh, is, are the HIVES. Uh, it's not an acronym, so that's good news in education. Um, the Hives were very intentional spaces that were designed in the elementary school to make sure that the hallways didn't feel like long corridors. So you have these neighborhoods of four to five schools, so you have about three of those in each grade level, and in between those, you have these common learning areas. Uh, up there, you can see a rendering of one of them in, I believe that is the fourth grade. So you have these spaces where you have a, a community sink. You also have opportunities for flexible seating. So all of that flexible seating that you see there will be rotating from school to school. It'll spend a month in each elementary school. The teachers will be able to sign up for a time slot to bring their class. And we also have a mobile cart that goes with the Hive, that's got their pencils, crayons, scissors, glue, clipboards. So all they need to do is just come to the space. We really want to give the teachers the experience of that collaborative learning space and opening up their classroom doors beyond just those four walls. So we're very, very excited about these Hives in the elementary school. They are a great opportunity for the learning to just be very active and like a hive, very full of busyness, very full of energy, very productive work. Um, so I will report later on in the year, I'll try to grab some pictures of the teachers and the students in the Hives, but this is something that we're really, really excited um, to be a part of the elementary school. It'll really give us an opportunity to provide those opportunities that are going to really look like what the workforce looks like. Um, so very, very excited to finally see years of planning in front of us. Um, and to see the kids and teachers engaging with it will just be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Bright uh, bright spots and big things. That's all we have. Thank you.
Don't mind. I have a question uh, regards to uh, some work at IMS of Dr. Kozinski. Uh, Dr. Kozinski, since SiteLogic is not here, and they weren't scheduled to be here tonight, but just getting some feedback. On our punch list that uh, we had talked about a month or so ago, what's the, the status, you think?
So it's ongoing. We, we still have um, SiteLogic um, at the campus. Painting and finishes is probably the majority of things that they need to do. Um, but there are ongoing things. Um, they just installed a heater in um, the tech room. Um, we had some electrical issues that they um, we adjusted the contacts. Um, we have things that um, uh, we just got the drawings confirmed for the, the new dumpster areas, which will have a fence. We're waiting on some uh, some changes, um, like a sink that didn't fit. So uh, they're, they're moving. Um, it's a, it's an interesting pace because it's, it is a punch list, and so uh, the painters won't come until they know everything that they have to do to paint. They won't just come and touch up one area or whatnot. So um, there's, there's progress being made. Um, some of it will be done quickly and others, it will be on a um, day-to-day basis because we're waiting for some of the equipment to come in.
Okay, thank you. I just took a, a question from somebody in the community. I just figured we'd get some, uh, shed some light on it for you. So thank you. Uh, at this time, we have, uh, time is open for public comments on agenda items. Okay, uh, with no one coming forward at this time, uh, Mrs. Heather, would you mind taking, I believe we have consent agenda seventeen items? Could you just read them off?
Sure, no problem. So for the consent agenda, agenda, uh, we have professional development, change of assignment, assignment, appointment of personnel, acceptance of resignations, employment contract for the assistant to the superintendent for K through five education, approval for retirement agreements, approval of job description, approval of extra duty responsibility in Program 2025-2026, approval of change orders for the new K through five elementary school project, October 2025 salaries and bills, September 2025 financial report, payment for the new K through five elementary school project, payment for the Independence Middle School Phase Three renovations, payment for Independence Middle School Phase Four renovations, approval of the Title I non-public services provided by the Allegheny Intermediate Union, Unit, purchase approval for Kubota tractors, and approval of policies. I move one through seventeen.
Thank you. Second? Second by Mr. McGregor. Mr. Pictionary.
Voting is open. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. Scowzo, uh, for curriculum committee, please.
We have one item for professional development. Uh, we are gonna send Dr. Mark Kozinski to attend RTMs K through 12 National Superintendent's Forum at the Omni Shoreham Hotel in Washington, DC from October 26, 2025 through October 28th, 2025 at a cost of $689.24. I would like to move item number one.
So move second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Headley. Mr. Pictionary.
Voting is open. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, personnel, please.
Okay, under personnel tonight, there are two items. Uh, number one, appointment of personnel, and number two, change of assignment. I would like to move those two.
Second.
Two items moved by Mr. McGregor, second by Mr. Scowzo. That's no discussion? Vote is open.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Christensen, facilities committee, please.
Yes, we have two items. One is the approval of supplemental additional service charge over the uh, new K through five elementary school project. And we have the approval of field turf equipment for the high school practice field. Oh, the approval of field turf proposal for the high school practice fields. Would anybody like either of these held out separately? And any questions? See none. I'd like to move both items one and two.
Second.
Items one and two, and facilities moved by Mr. Christensen, second by Mr. Scowzo. Uh, just one question, Mr. Dr. K, uh, field turf proposal, just a quick summary.
Sure. So we um, we obtained five proposals um, from various organizations. Uh, our uh, turfs are in um, their latter stages of age. Um, they've been repaired multiple times, so we can't even repair the repair of the repairs. Um, the uh, field turf proposal has come in, uh, that uh, the, the, the proposal is for the value plus a 10% of contingency. So that if there is any um, situation where there might be additional drainage or something that we have to contend with or clean up. Um, the proposal uh, came in uh, below what we anticipated. We, we do have the money budgeted. Um, and the timeline is um, right up our expectation. They will begin uh, November 1st and start removing uh, all of the turf before uh, Thanksgiving. Uh, with weather cooperating, they will install the turf, uh, um, make adjustments to the area on the, if you've been to the turf, in the middle of the two, there is grass. We are having that removed. We will have from fence to fence, complete turf. Um, and so they'll have to do a, a little bit of um, drainage work there and so forth. Uh, but they will be done with our expectation for the March 1st week so that spring practices can participate before or on that date.
What about when you enter into turf? It's always muddy.
That will be corrected as well. There will be turf all the way to the concrete.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it'll be graded and um, where that gate is by the, the modulators, yes, that will be turf as well.
To the restrooms too, like?
Um, it'll, it won't reach all the way that, because there's a drain there, we're not going to, we'll, we'll make sure that that's soldered or seeded so that it'll, it'll grow.
Is that the complaints about the mud coming?
Correct.
So fence to fence, and then all the way to the concrete, near the?
There, there's a, so on the backside, there is no fence, um, but it's to the um, the border. And then there will be a strip of grass along the fence on the inside, but where it is now.
Yeah.
To where it is on the backside will be completely turf.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pictionary, for the vote.
Voting is open. Motion passes seven zero.
Fine, thank you. Um, Mr. Christensen, can I put you to work again for finance committee, please?
Sure. Yes, we have uh, two items under finance committee also. One is for the payment of the new K through five elementary school project. The uh, other is the approval of contracts with Communications Consulting, Inc. for the new K through five elementary school. Is there any discussion, or would anybody like either of these held out? If I'm done, I will move both items one and two.
Second.
Items one and two, finance, uh, moved by Mr. Christensen, second by Mrs. Hoppy. Just, um, Mr. Boylan. So on, on number two, what would be the scope of this again, or?
So this is essentially uh, approval of the purchase of all network equipment for the elementary school. Previous equipment purchased were the touch panels uh, for the classrooms, the security cameras. Uh, this would encompass the remaining equipment, technologically speaking, with the exception of the digital signage.
Good.
And it's a good sign because uh, it was told to purchase so they can get it in. So that shows how quickly they're getting to the point of.
They're asking, yeah, they're asking for equipment uh, much sooner than we anticipated, so that's a good thing. So, that's a good thing.
Yes, so it's a very good sign.
Mr. Pushehary, go for vote?
Was that directed towards?
I was looking at you.
I'll ask next month just to make sure.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Hoppy, policy committee, please?
Yep, we have just some administrative regulations for our discussion for us to see. These are not voting items. I do have a question. I see AR, 217 AR zero and then one and then five, I believe. Oh, they're all there now. Earlier, when I was looking, there were some that were not there. So, they're all there for us to see.
Yeah, I apologize. We had to finish uploading.
That's okay.
Yeah.
So, these all have to do with graduation commencement, graduation requirements, pathways to graduation, counseling for senior students, early graduation and procedures for honorary diplomas. So, those are all, again, administrative regulations. They are not policies.
Right. They already have, the 217 is the policy that exists already. These individual ARs direct the implementation of those policies, those policy items regarding graduation. That 217 had to change because state regulations on graduation requirements had recently changed in state code. So, we've updated that, which means we update these ARs at the same time.
I have at least one question. AR two, the pathways. There's, I was just wondering about the note. At the bottom of it, there's an asterisk that all pathways are, that are identified by PDE are recognized to meet state grad requirements, but not all are applicable or implemented within our district. And I was just wondering if anything had changed with that or is this, we're just saying that so that everyone's aware we could change what's available?
Yes, I could speak to that. If you look at the newly created AR one, in our local education agency and our policy 217, a lot of this has been annotated in our course selection guide for years. So, the state has their minimum requirements for graduation credits and the alternative pathways. As an educational system in Bethel Park, some of those we offer and some of those we don't. We don't have a baccalaureate program. We don't do some of the AP course, AP extended coursework. So, the way we presented this was kind of a combination between one and two. So, in AR one, it specifically highlights our course credit requirements in those concentration and areas. And many of you may be familiar if you've had students in the high school or graduated there. We have a chart that was orange and black that highlighted the alternative pathways as we currently offer them. That is listed on page two of AR one and then it notes the additional requirements. So, in AR two, we then host and link to the site. So, while we acknowledge the current pathways that we offer based on the offerings at Bethel Park High School, we're not against if something new or changed in PDE. So, while one dictates our graduation and alternative pathways, two leaves the option open for us to evaluate or shift if something did change and that's directly linked to the PDE website and guidelines. When we do waivers and apply to say they satisfied that to attest that they met those Keystone requirements through the pathways or we apply for a waiver for a student that has not met those based on different criteria, we wanted to leave the option open for what we dictate in our policy and that's where we have that statement there that we might not be able to accredit that or we will evaluate it to see if it could help us in one and/or the other.
Okay, thank you. And I had a question in AR zero, AR zero. It looks like the presenting diplomas is shifting to just the superintendent and the principal?
No, so it's redlined. It previously, and I'm not sure which version's there, in the first paragraph, this was an existing policy or AR from PSEA. So, just so it accurately matches our current procedure, which is not changing, the high school principal verifies that all students receiving diploma have met all requirements. The graduating class will be presented to the board by the high school principal. The next paragraph, the school board member will award school district diploma to each individual. The next paragraph simply states that the superintendent or the high school principal may also present, but that will still reside with the board members as it did. So, it was just clarifying some of the text that was in there.
I thought that the school board member awarding was the president accepting the class. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, nothing else then? All right, other, and I'll take that. Approval of the annual assistant superintendent evaluation. The board of school directors confirm the annual evaluation assistant superintendent, Dr. Mark Krasinski, for the 2024-2025 school year with a rating of satisfactory and directs the posting the same on the district website according to school code. I move that item?
Second.
Second by, it was a tie. Do we flip a coin?
My president was on Mr. Christensen's side.
Mr. Sorry. All right. Moved by Mr. Modrock, second by Mr. Christensen. Mr. Pushehary will take the vote?
Voting's open. Motion passes seven zero.
Very good. At this time of the meeting for public comments, anybody in the audience can please come up and just state your name and you have two minutes to address the board.
Good evening. My name's David Broderick. I'm a resident. My daughter goes to Bethel Park High School. Ladies and gentlemen of the board of Bethel Park School District, this letter is being written to formally express serious concerns regarding the conduct and performance of Coach Brooke Morocco, head varsity coach.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You can have your speaker. Just please, no names at all. You can say coach, but please, no names at all.
Apologies.
Thank you, sir.
Head varsity coach of the Bethel Park Girls Volleyball Program. After careful observation, firsthand experiences and multiple attempts to address these concerns through proper administrative channels, we strongly believe that it is in the best interest of the student athletes, the program and Bethel Park School District that the coach's contract be terminated. Over the course of several seasons, the coach has demonstrated a pattern of cruel demeaning and retaliatory behavior towards players who have either spoken up for themselves or their teammates or otherwise fallen out of her personal favor. This behavior has included benching players for extended periods, isolating and humiliating specific athletes and making quiet, passive-aggressive or overtly degrading comments designed to undermine a student's confidence and standing against her peers, I'm sorry, standing amongst her peers. Many girls within the program have been fearful to come forward due to legitimate concerns that doing so would result in retaliation, further loss of playing time or emotional punishment. Unfortunately, those fears have proven valid. Several players have sought counseling and mental health support to deal with the emotional harm and verbal abuse that they endured. As parents, my wife and I have been deeply involved in the volleyball program for several years, not only as active boosters, but as supporters of our daughter and her love and dedication to the sport. Our daughter has played volleyball since she was 12 years old, competing at an elite level at a local volleyball club and has consistently been described by former coaches and teammates as driven, respectful and highly coachable. As a freshman, our daughter was rostered on both the junior varsity and varsity teams, even starting for varsity at times. She continued as a varsity starter in her sophomore and junior years, representing her school with pride.
Just a few more, hour and a half seats. We're quite.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll try to get close to the point. However, this past season has been extremely difficult and traumatic for her, along with several teammates reported instances of verbal abuse, hazing and targeted retaliation, including public humiliation, unequal treatment and verbal degradation during practices and games. When these concerns were brought forward through appropriate school channels, the response was defensive and dismissive, further isolating the victims rather than protecting them. I'll try and skip ahead a little bit here. We believe it would be in the coach's own best interest to voluntarily step down as head coach of the program and seek professional counseling to address behavioral issues and leadership deficiencies that have contributed to this situation. At any points, much of this could have been avoided if she had taken accountability for her actions, acknowledged the harm and made a genuine effort to repair the relationships with her players and their families. Given the consistent reports from several parents of verbal and emotional mistreatment over the tenure of the coach, the decline in program performance and the ongoing emotional impacts of student athletes, we respectfully request that the board take immediate and decisive action to terminate the coach's contract, appoint leadership that aligns with the values of safety, respect and integrity that Bethel Park School District claims to uphold. The girls in this program deserve better. They deserve leadership that empowers, not degrades, builds character, not fear and teach them that strength is not only in athletic ability, but in compassion, fairness and respect. Thank you for your time and consideration. David Broderick.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Just to acknowledge, there was two emails the board received from mom and I had to apologize. I had no chance to acknowledge it, but I think we had to take a look at our emails here today. Some will come in later on this afternoon, but just acknowledge we did receive those emails and we have further conversations about this subject as a whole in our executive session with administration. So, thank you. Anybody else at this time? Any board members like to make any comments? No? I just want to acknowledge, there was three, our condolences from the district and the board to some past members of our district that passed away over the last month. First, Dr. Rick Capusta. A few of us had a chance to work with him. He was our school psychologist for 25 years. I'm sorry to look at you guys, Dave, at least, right? 30 years. Great man. Lot of us had a chance to work with him. He was really good and he was a great asset to this district. Also, we had Robert, which I never knew his first name, but Buff Lewis. Yeah, Buff Lewis was a special ed teacher down at the high school and after a 25, 30-year career, also a great asset. And William Weaver, I had the pleasure to get to know William. He was a long-term substitute nurse for us and he was always there, willing and available to come assist the district if he can. But again, repeating on behalf of the district, we share our condolences with their, with their families. That's all I would have. Motion from anybody?
Vote.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.